I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a moment of silence. Please.
Council President Chamberlain.
Here.
Counselor Griggs.
Here.
Counselor Heising.
Here.
Counselor Schneider.
Here.
Counselor Stickley.
Here.
Counselor Stewart. We have six members present, we have a floor.
Thank you. Counsel has had time to review the prior meetings minutes. There's no discussion, can we have a moment please?
I will make that motion to approve the minutes, mayor.
I'll second it.
Motion to approve the prior meeting minutes was moved by Counselor Stickley and seconded by Counselor Griggs, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. And we have a couple of individuals that will be addressing counsel tonight. We're going to start with Lori Brody, she is a representative from the auditor, and she is bringing a state award for our finance.
Good evening, thanks for having me this evening. I am from State Auditor, Keith Faber's office, and I am happy to be here tonight to bring an award to the city of Waseon. And I think it's important to note that it puts Waseon in a very slight group, only about 8% of the 5,900 entities that we audit actually receive the Auditor of State award. And I think it's important to bring it in person, so I'm glad you could have me this evening. And I like to just read a list, it's quick, of what it takes to get the award. It's given to all local governments or school districts upon the completion of a financial audit that meet the criteria of a clean audit. You must file your financial report with the Auditor State within 150 days of fiscal year end. You have to have a clean audit with no findings for recovery, material citations, material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, single audit findings, or question costs. Your management letter can contain no comments related to ethics referrals, question costs less than $10,000, lack of timely report submission, reconciliation problems, failure to obtain a timely single audit, findings for recovery less than $100, or any public meeting or public records infractions. Basically, the entity shall have no financial concerns, pretty long list. But I think the award represents the hard work though of all the employees in the city that I think have to strive every day to achieve the accounting excellence. But I also think the mayor and the council have done a really good job accounting for every dollar that the city spends. I do especially want to thank your finance director, Jamie, and staff, just for their outstanding leadership and their commitment to fiscal integrity. Because I do think it takes everybody in a city, but I especially thank the person that has to file all these reports with us. So with that being said, on behalf of the State Auditor, Keith Faber, I'd just like to present the city with the Auditor State award and give it to your finance director.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Nice job, Jamie.
Thank you. Look forward to seeing you next year.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll be here.
Put it on your calendar.
Thank you, Lori. Appreciate you having me.
Good honor for this city. Okay, next, Keith, I think you have a presentation as well. Larry?
Yes, I do. If I could have Larry come up front? I just want to take a moment to recognize Larry Frye, he retired as of Wednesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday was Wednesday.
With 28 years of service with the city. He will be greatly missed. Obviously, the tree commission has a hold of him now because of it, but we wanted to present you with this clock as a small token of this recognition for all your years of service.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Larry.
Congratulations.
Thank you for those 28 years, Larry. Appreciate it. And our parks look great with the trees as well. You guys have done a great job. Thanks very much. Okay, we're going to move on, and I guess I'm going to ask counsel for a motion to amend the agenda today because Tom came in with a Johnny Lee legislation that needs to be, it's an annual legislation that we need to look at.
Well, actually, it's, and I apologize for the very, very late notice, but it is a duplicate of a previous ordinance that council passed in August approving an opioid settlement. That one was for the distributors. About a week ago, I received notice that they had entered into a settlement, the state had entered into a settlement with Johnson &amp; Johnson and one other entity. And so they're asking that the municipalities and the villages and the counties sign on as of December 8th if possible. So I prepared ordinance 2021-12, which essentially is just a cut and paste from the prior ordinance with the distributors, and essentially disauthorizes Kathy or her designee to sign the agreement to participate in that settlement. And essentially, long story short, it's a complicated process, but after all the approvals have been received from the various political subdivisions, the state will determine based on a previously determined formula how much money each of the entities gets individually, and then how much each region gets to be distributed in some fashion to the entities. Someday when that, the money actually gets distributed, probably back before you to describe how that's going to take place and explain how much the city will get. But I don't think it's an insubstantial amount, it'll be, you know, it's not one of these class actions, sometimes you get in the mail where if you sign, you might get a couple of dollars back, and the attorneys get all the rest of the money. I think there'll be a fairly decent amount of money coming back to the city. So I guess what I would ask is a motion to amend the agenda to throw this, to put this on for first reading and a declaration of emergency at the very end of the first reads.
Yeah.
And again, I apologize for the late notice, I had it about a week ago, and I just, being with the holidays, it just slipped my mind until about 3:30 this afternoon, I called Brooke.
So all I ask is counsel to more or less make a motion to amend the agenda so that we can add this to the first reading set.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion to amend the agenda was moved by Counsel Heising and seconded by Counsel Stickley. Is there any discussion? Counselor Heising?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Stewart?
Yes.
Counselor Griggs?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel President Chamberlain?
Yes.
6A, 0A's, motion carries.
Thank you, counsel. Okay, so let's move forward then on to our department head reports. We have committee reports from Finance Committee, the visiting committee.
Yes, we met on November 24th at 10:00 a.m., basically to discuss the budget for the year 2022. We started by reviewing the police budget, Chief Chiff then answered questions regarding changes from the previous year's budget. Then we did the same with Chief Slaughter for the fire department. There was a request for two vehicles, of which one of them we deleted from the capital budget, but $46,000 Tahoe was approved. And then I think I asked a question regarding the fire budget, and Jamie said it had been moved to a different fund for ease of reporting expenses to Towns, Johnson, and County. After that was done, then we continued through the capital budget items and asked questions of Director Torbit regarding public service requests. We then had discussion regarding the middle part, North Diamonds, but with no changes currently to the Public Service Department capital requests. We then discussed the council chamber upgrades, there was originally $5,000 in the budget to replace the carpet, which has been needed for some time, but we also agreed to increase the budget by 5,000 to replace the purple chairs. Apparently, some of you get up, you may have purple on your pants because it apparently bleeds off.
I'm calling you out, you're sad.
So the added expense was to replace those, but we decided we didn't want to replace them with anything real lavish or plus, just a basic chair, so that's in the works. Then we went to the beginning of the budget proposal, around 50 pages or plus or minus, and went through each page and asked questions about various things, which Jamie and Keith answered, and there were no further amendments made. The other matter was the CPI adjustment to the wage scale. Jamie said that there needed to be a change because the scale just wouldn't hold everybody because of the price increase, Consumer Price Index, and so some people had to be moved to get into the scale, the scale's got to be adjusted, and we agreed to do that. It didn't mean a significant amount of money or wage increase for everybody, it was adjusting the scale so that people could fit into that scale. So after some discussion on that, Council President Chamberlain made a motion with myself seconding to approve the new wage scale, and then Counselor Heising made the motion with myself seconding to approve the budget as amended. And then the committee adjourned at 11:30 a.m. And I believe I mentioned the other day that budget for next year is actually less than last year.
Yeah.
Because of bonds being paid off and readjusted.
And we did not receive as much in coronavirus lines in 2021.
Yeah. So we're holding the line for that.
And the action on the CPI is something that counsel put in place, I think most of you probably are aware of this, that every year it gets checked just to see where we're at, so we're not broadside if we fluctuate and stuff, so that's just something that the finance and Jamie always checks on, make sure scales in place. Okay. We have another two motions. We need two different motions. The first motion would be for the budget as amended, and then the second one would be for the wage scale.
I'll make a motion to accept the budget. I'll second.
Motion to recommend city council approve the 2022 budget as amended, moved by Counsel Schneider and seconded by Counsel Stewart, is there any discussion? Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor Stewart?
Yes.
Counsel President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Griggs?
Yes.
Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Heising?
Yes.
6A, 0A's, motion carries.
Then we need a motion to recommend the city council approve the new wage scale.
I make a motion to accept the finance committee's recommendation.
I'll second that motion.
Motion to recommend city council approve the new wage scale was moved by Counsel President Chamberlain and seconded by Counsel Stickley, is there any discussion? Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor Stewart?
Yes.
Counsel President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Griggs?
Yes.
Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Heising?
Yes.
6A, 0A's, motion carries.
Then we need a motion to recommend the city council approve the new wage scale.
I make a motion to accept the finance committee's recommendation.
I'll second that motion.
Motion to recommend city council approve the new wage scale was moved by Counsel President Chamberlain and seconded by Counsel Stickley, is there any discussion?
Yeah, real quick, Jamie, any idea how many employees would be adjusted by, affected by the adjustment?
The last time I checked, there were only two that were below.
That would be below the minimum?
Yeah.
That would have to broaden into the range?
Is there any above the scale?
No.
Thank you.
Counsel President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor Griggs?
No.
Counselor Heising?
Yes.
Counselor Stewart?
Yes.
5A's, 1A's, motion carries.
All right, thank you. Moving on, we have a buildings and grounds report.
And that would be me. So we met at 9 o'clock on November 24th. Present was Steve and myself. Keith Torbit was here, Jamie Giugir was here, Matt Gilroy was here from Economic Development, and Ben Blechler was here from his company, which is trying to develop Arrowhead Trails subdivision with 19 more lots. He came with a TIF, which is tax increment financing. Basically, what it comes up to is that Jamie, which would put on a bond for about $500,000, she said it's about 1.95, but that probably can vary from moment to moment, so we don't know where we'll be at. It'll work for 10 years, which will give the, Ben Blechler, the funding to put the infrastructure in these 19 lots in Arrowhead Trails, and Keith Torbit was questioned on that issue. But it is a great benefit to the city to be able to have control of how the infrastructure gets put in those 19 lots, so the city don't have to come back years later and repair the infrastructure of the storm sewer, sanitation sewer, water lines, streets and curves when we have some input in doing that at this time. So it would be a great benefit to the city to do that. Also, to assist would be a great benefit to the city to build, have lots available for building. It will increase our tax revenue, maybe not tomorrow, but in the future, it will also help the school system of Waseon with tax revenue. So all in all, it was all approved, voted on by Steve and I, motion second, to bring it to counsel tonight to approve this so we can start moving forward to improve the city of Waseon. Right now, we have very few lots in the city for construction. And as George Patton said, and I'll use his in World War II, "If you're holding your own, you're not moving forward. If you don't move forward, there's usually only one direction you're going to go, and that's backwards." The city of Waseon has an opportunity to start moving forward. I believe that the city and any municipality that takes this opportunity to gain lots for housing will move forward in the future, and our tax revenue base will move forward in the future. So with that, I believe we should move forward.
Harold, do you want to say something about how that bond amount is paid back? Because the city is not, is fronting the money but not really paying for it.
Paid back in 10 years, and I apologize, I don't really know how it's paid back. Jamie, can you help us out on that?
Yeah, so when the houses are built, there are property taxes, 75% of that will be put towards the bond. And if the bond payments are more than what that tax revenue is, Ben Blechler will cover that gap, so the city will not be responsible for anything for this bond. All of it will be paid through tax revenue or through Ben Blechler?
Yeah, it's actually 75% of the increased value of the lot. So if the lot is worth $30,000 now, and it's sold for $200,000, the 75% of the difference between the selling price and the lot original amount, the original amount of tax money will still go into the various entities.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Jamie.
And the construction, you're correct, for housing is limited. We have, you know, zones for business and industrial, but housing is limited, so I think this would be very beneficial to try to get more families into cities.
We have, we have properties zoned R1 and 2.
Right.
We just need contractors to be able to step forward to start construction. But this program, I do believe it's a state program.
Sure, yeah.
Right? It's very beneficial to municipalities and cities to help out to move forward.
Just to foreshadow a little bit, eventually, what will be before you is an actual resolution or ordinance approving the TIF, along with a TIF agreement between the city and the developer. So this is kind of your first look at it, it's essentially, it's a go ahead and take the next step kind of thing. The ordinance, the ordinance will be a bit detailed, and the agreement will be detailed and have all the specifics in it. So there'll be a lot more details forthcoming in terms of how it's going to look out. And Matt's really excited, Matt Gilroy's excited about using this as kind of an initial attempt at a TIF in this area, and he hopes to be able to use it not only just in other, maybe in other areas of the city, but also in other areas in the county. So we're kind of going to be a template here.
And I think the uniqueness of this particular TIF project is that it's residential development. I think it's most often been applied towards commercial development.
I think that's right.
And I have to say, you know, the times Matt Gilroy has come in and spoke to us, he's a wealth of information when it comes to this, and the law firm that he's using out of Columbus, they've answered all of our questions that we've had, so I really appreciate Matt's time and attention.
And Matt is out of town, and I think he's even out of the state. So he did send this to Keith. He will be here December 20th for any of the voting to answer any more questions on that issue, but Keith was here, do you have anything to answer? No, I just have to realize that this also, if for some reason the developer walks away, we will have safeguards in place as far as taking over the property so that we, the city is not held in loss, or as little of a loss as possible.
Yeah, the city will take obviously a secured interest in the property itself, and then also probably get personal guarantee from the developer, so we'll build in as much protection as we can so that if something, in the worst case scenario, happens, the city, hopefully we can protect it.
And it's a complex issue, and I would encourage any of the citizens of Waseon that have questions about the city's use of the TIF project to either sit down with maybe Jamie or reach out to Matt Gilroy to have those questions answered. But I'm excited about it.
That does sum up my buildings and grounds reading.
So we need a motion to accept the buildings and grounds recommendation to move forward with the TIF program.
I will second the motion.
Motion to recommend city council accept and move forward with the TIF program was moved by Counsel Griggs and seconded by Counsel Stickley. Any more discussion? Counsel Griggs?
Yes.
Counsel Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel Heising?
Yes.
Counsel Stewart?
Yes.
6A, 0A's, motion carries.
And I apologize, I'm going to piggyback the department head reports. Sorry, Keith? I'm moving forward.
I got my report out to you guys last week, have you seen that?
Very colorful.
All the graphic?
Other than that, nothing going on. We'll be helping with the Christmas for kids coming up this weekend.
It's going to be a busy weekend.
Yeah, those calls have been under pretty high rate, a lot of hospitals are closing in northwest Ohio, so we can deal with that, but we'll get through it.
Are you guys having any transfer out?
Yeah, most is, most of our roads are going to be still.
Okay. All right, thank you. Keith, anything else?
So we dealt with the TIF here, Larry retiring, we have had the civil service test, we will have seven people take the test, six people passed it, we will get that certified here Wednesday, and hopefully get someone hired for his replacement first of the year. Trying to keep the Christmas decorations up for these weddings right now, but overall, we're doing fairly well, a lot of projects wrapping up here at the end, and that's about it. Unless anyone has any questions, time specific.
They, you had mentioned maybe a month ago that they were picking up leaves, and there probably wouldn't be another brush or stick picked up, is there going to be one with the wind?
We're going to try and work one in, I know we will have one after Christmas, we always go out and pick up the Christmas trees and any additional brush at that time, we will, if we can get it worked in with the leaves and everything, to take one truck off and go to big brush, we may do that one more time, especially with these winds, we do have several brushes, several piles of brush down already if you've been around town.
Right, yeah, and I, in my backyard, I've got some, and I didn't know whether to haul them out while they're sat there all year, or if there's going to be a pickup soon.
There will be a pickup at, I know for sure after the first of the year, to pick up any Christmas trees that they put up.
Put them on your tree.
So we will have at least one more before spring, but I'm hoping to have two, one before the end of the year, if we have the manpower.
Hopefully, we can shoot that out when you guys decide you do it, because as soon as you tell them you're going to do it, it's going to snow. So it's like, you know, it's crapshoot when it comes to this.
Thank you.
Is there any truth to the rumor, Keith, that take two people to be hired to replace Larry Frye? Is there any truth to that?
Well, it's going to take a while to get John Alexander up to speed on the tree commission.
Yeah, that's true, right.
Larry's not.
Do you think there's an opportunity for Larry to stay involved in tree commission agreement? I don't know if he's interested at all.
Well, we're trying to get Pat on as a permanent member, so.
I was like, wait a minute. I like the trees.
Once you're on, you never leave.
All right, we're ready to, Jamie, you got a point.
Thought you were going to skip out.
How would we, okay.
See, end of the year, Jamie needs to talk.
So I provided you the income tax revenue, I wanted to point out that we are still 3.25% ahead of 2017, 7.6% ahead of 2018, 11.85% ahead of 2019. So I feel like our income tax revenue is certainly going in the right direction compared to where we've been the past few years. I feel like Trish is doing a phenomenal job at collecting taxes for people that have not paid and people that have not filed. She's recently sent out two thousand letters to people, so hopefully we're going to see some more revenue coming for that. Also, tomorrow night is the civil service test for the water position that Ashley left last week, so we're having a test, hopefully we can raise those and get interviews scheduled soon and get that position filled. And I guess that's all I have for tonight. So?
Well, I guess I have another apology for the late addition of that last resolution, and humble apologies for turning that, the very, very last.
Do fans.
Oh? Yes, I'm pining over the loss of that Ohio state game.
You just lost your monthly pay.
But I did receive an APB on the trails this past week, was able to get my chainsaw out and remove a tree from the path in the north, south, east corner of North Woods. Big thanks to our folks out there who are always on the watch for things that need to be addressed out there. It's really beautiful out there right now, if you haven't been out, you see, get there in the morning, you're definitely going to see some deer traversing through either of the woods. Yeah. And the other thing I would say, tune into The Voice tonight and vote early and vote often for a girling top. Bring back the
Did you say you used a chainsaw?
I didn't, yeah. It's just a little electric one.
Beyond stable.
Smarter is an increasing E on that one.
Job security.
I probably shouldn't have mentioned that.
All righty, thank you, sorry for skipping over you guys. Okay, now we'll move on to first reading of legislation. We have ordinance, ordinance 2021-11, ordinance to approve, adopt, and enact the 2020 replacement pages to the codified ordinances, to repeal ordinances in conflict therewith, to publish the enactment of the matter and declaring this an emergency.
I declare emergency on ordinance 2021-11.
I'll second.
Motion to place ordinance 2021-11 on emergency reading, moved by Counsel President Chamberlain and seconded by Counselor Schneider, any discussion? Counsel President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel Griggs?
Yes.
Counsel Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel Heising?
Yes.
Counsel Stewart?
Yes.
6A, 0A's, motion carries.
Final reading?
Second.
Motion to place ordinance 2021-11 on final reading, moved by Counsel President Chamberlain and seconded by Counsel Stewart, any discussion? Counsel
Council President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Stewart's?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council Greggs?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
680 nays, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Resolution 2021-16, a resolution authorizing the mayor to issue a request for qualifications for an engineer.
I'll make that motion.
I will second. Motion to place resolution 2021-16 on first reading and the first reading be passed, moved by Council Stickley and seconded by Council Heising. Any discussion?
Should this read engineer or engineers? Does she have anything to do with that? Just qualification for engineer?
You hope to get more than one, right?
Yeah, we hope so.
Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Stewart's?
Yes.
Council Greggs?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council President Chamberlain?
Yes.
680 nays, motion carries.
Resolution 2021-17 is a resolution adjusting the compensation plan's wage scale based on the Consumer Price Index, and we need to declare this an emergency.
I make a motion to place resolution 2021-17 on emergency. Second.
Motion to place resolution 2021-17 on emergency reading, moved by Council President Chamberlain and seconded by Council Stewart's. Any discussion?
What is the price index right now, do you know?
So when I did the reports for them, I mean September, it was a 4% increase. When I looked at it in October, it was like 6.7, 6.9%.
So this is going to be at 4?
Yeah.
Okay.
Council President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Stewart's?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council Greggs?
No.
Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
5 yas, 1 nae, motion carries. Is there a final on this?
Final passage? Second.
Motion to place resolution 2021-17 on final reading, moved by Council President Chamberlain and seconded by Council Stickley. Any discussion? Council President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council Greggs?
No.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Stewart's?
Yes.
5 yas, 1 nae, motion carries.
Okay, moving on to resolution 2021-18, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement with Ohio Planned Risk Management Incorporated for casualty, liability, fire and property damage insurance and declaring this an emergency.
I'll make a motion to declare emergency.
Second.
Motion to place resolution 2021-18 on emergency reading, moved by Council Stickley and seconded by Council Schneider. Any discussion? Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council Stewart's?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Greggs?
Yes.
Council President Chamberlain?
Yes.
680 nays, motion carries. Get a final?
Final reading? Second.
Who's the second? I'm sorry.
Rock, paper, scissors, Scott.
Motion to place resolution 2021-18 on final reading, moved by Council Stickley and seconded by Council Greggs. Any discussion? Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council Greggs?
Yes.
Council President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Stewart's?
Yes.
680 nays, motion carries.
Okay, resolution 2021-19, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement with MetLife to provide life insurance and voluntary dental and vision insurance for full-time employees and declaring an emergency.
I'll make that motion.
I will second. Motion to place resolution 2021-19 on emergency reading, moved by Council Stickley and seconded by Council Heising. Is there any discussion? Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Stewart's?
Yes.
Council Greggs?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council President Chamberlain?
Yes.
680 nays, motion carries.
Final?
Thank you.
Second.
Motion to place resolution 2021-19 on final reading, moved by Council Schneider and seconded by Council Greggs. Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council Greggs?
Yes.
Council President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Stewart's?
Yes.
680 nays, motion carries.
Resolution 2021-20 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement for the health insurance coverage with Pareto Captain Services LLC, Berkshire Hathaway and Lucian Health Services and declaring this an emergency.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion to place resolution 2021-20 on emergency reading, moved by Council Stickley and seconded by Council President Chamberlain. Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council Greggs?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Stewart's?
Yes.
680 nays, motion carries.
Scott, so sorry.
I'll second the idea.
Motion to place resolution 2021-20 on final reading, moved by Council Stewart's and seconded by Council President Chamberlain. Any discussion?
Is this the same company that we had before?
Yes.
Okay, I thought it was. I wanted a confirmation.
The only difference is that we were insured by Sun Life and that now has changed to Berkshire Hathaway, only because Pareto has now added Berkshire as one of the options. It used to only be Sun Life. So they have moved several of their clients over to Berkshire to share the services.
That's good. I understand. Thank you.
You're welcome. Council Stewart's?
Yes.
Council President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council Greggs?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
680 nays, motion carries.
Okay, and one more. Ordinance 2021-12, an ordinance authorizing the mayor or her designated to accept the material terms of the One Ohio Subdivision settlement pursuant to the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding and Consistent with the Terms of the July 21, 2021 National Opioid Settlement and to sign the One Ohio Subdivision Participation Board. And this needs to be declared an emergency.
Due to timing, let's do the eighth.
Yes, they wanted everybody to be in by the eighth if possible.
When'd you get it, destiny?
No, I got it about a week, a week ago. But I had to, I had to muddle through all the stuff and try to figure out what was going on.
I make a motion to declare emergency on ordinance 2021-12.
I'll second that motion.
Motion to place ordinance 2021-12 on emergency reading, moved by Council President Chamberlain and seconded by Council Stickley. Any discussion? Council President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council Greggs?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Stewart's?
Yes.
680 nays, motion carries.
Thank you. We got through all of those.
Final.
Well, yes, it's a final. Sorry. We're not to react.
No.
Second.
Motion to place ordinance 2021-12 on final reading, moved by Council Greggs and seconded by Council Schneider. Any discussion? Council Greggs?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council President Chamberlain?
Yes.
Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Stewart's?
Yes.
680 nays, motion carries.
I think Brooke needs another water after all that.
You want a bottle? You need a bottle?
All right, we have nothing under second reading, so we're going to move on to third reading. Ordinance 2021-10, an ordinance amending the sections. You can read all of those numbers and of the codified ordinances of the city of Waseon. Okay, I'll go for it.
You're like an auction.
I know what it is, then I'll go for it.
Maybe we want to second it?
Let's second it.
All right, there you go.
Motion to place ordinance 2021-10 on final reading and the final reading be passed, moved by Council Heising and seconded by Council Stickley. Any discussion? Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council Stewart's?
Yes.
Council Greggs?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.
Council President Chamberlain?
Yes.
680 nays, motion carries.
All right, new business. Motion to increase the amount of premium pay to employees for COVID exposure from March 2020 to June of 2020 in the amount of $5,225 from the local fiscal recovery fund. Is there a motion on this?
I'll make that motion.
The motion was moved by Council Stickley and seconded by Council Stewart's. Is there any discussion?
I do. Is this for all full-time employees?
It's for full and part-time.
Full and part-time?
Yeah.
And everybody's going to get the same amount?
No.
True, why?
They're getting the amount based on the amount of exposure they had to COVID during that time. So if they were working from home, they're not getting a premium pay. If they were called off and were actually at home because they had COVID or because they were quarantined, they're not getting the whole payment.
But they're all getting paid equal amount of money if they worked full-time and they was working outside?
Yeah.
Because no one's, no one's other, no one's life matters more than each other, right?
Yeah.
Correct?
Yeah.
And this is, this is just an additional amount.
Above, I know, because it's more above.
So we voted on the other before.
I know, I'm just, are just the employees that are employed now getting it, or?
Yes.
So the same equation was used for everybody?
Yeah.
But if they worked and they, and they quit or resigned, they'll still get paid back or not?
No, if they're no longer working with the city, they're not going to get a payout.
Okay.
Because this is a money earnings, was actually money that was given to the city to use for this reason.
I know.
So that's why that decision was made.
I just wanted to kind of clarify in my little brain of who was getting what and where that was, you know?
That, or I'm working.
Yeah.
Okay.
Council Stickley?
Yes.
Council Stewart's?
Yes.
Council Heising?
Yes.
Council Greggs?
Yes.
Council Schneider?
Yes.